Good evening. I would like to call to order the City Council meeting for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, for Monday, August the 25th, 2025. Would you please stand as you are able and join me in the Pledge Allegiance to the Flag?
The Pledge Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll of the members?
Jenny Snell.
Present.
Scott Ohm.
Here.
Amanda Weaver.
Here.
Corey Stites.
Here.
Leah Dozeman.
Here.
Janice Hoppe.
Present.
Rachel Holtein.
Present.
Dan Larson.
Here.
You have a form.
And I'll make a note that we have all of our councilors with us tonight. Thank you all for being here. Councilors, in your packet, you have City Council meeting minutes for August the 11th of 2025. Are there any corrections to be noted in the minutes? Seeing none, we will let the minutes stand as presented with our thanks to the clerk. Are there any changes to be noted in the agenda? We will move with the agenda as presented, and we have a proclamation tonight, National Suicide Prevention Month. And I would like to ask Rebecca Mitchell to join me on the podium tonight. Thank you, Rebecca, for being here. Rebecca is with Jefferson Center for Mental Health. Thank you so much for being here. This is a proclamation concerning National Suicide Prevention Month, September 2025. Whereas National Suicide Prevention Month, in conjunction with National Suicide Prevention Week, is an annual month-long campaign in the United States to inform and engage health professionals and the general public about suicide prevention and the warning signs of suicide. Whereas by drawing attention to the problem of suicide in the United States, the campaign also strives to reduce the stigma surrounding the topic, as well as encourage the pursuit of mental health assistance and support people who have attempted suicide. And whereas, as part of the campaign, health organizations are encouraged to conduct depression screenings, including self-administered and online tests, and refer interested individuals to a national suicide hotline and crisis line. Call or text 988, or chat at 988lifeline.org. And whereas, since 1975, National Suicide Prevention Week awareness events are held throughout the week, corresponding to World Suicide Prevention Day, which is recognized annually on the 10th of September. And whereas, the city of Wheat Ridge provided funding to Jefferson Center to recertify their suicide prevention coordinator to be a QPR, question, persuade, refer, instructor, to help save lives by teaching practical steps that anyone can take when they are concerned about someone who may be in crisis. Now therefore, be it resolved, that I, Bud Starke, Mayor of the city of Wheat Ridge, and the Wheat Ridge City Council, do hereby proclaim that September be declared Suicide Prevention Month, and the week of September 7th through 13, 2025, be declared Suicide Prevention Week, in the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, dated this 25th day of August, 2025. Here's a copy of the present. Proclamation, and would you like to say a few words, please?
Just drove in from Colorado Springs right on time. Shake your hands. How perfect was that? Thank you all so much. Thank you, councilmembers. This is an honor to accept this proclamation. I stand before you today as the Suicide Prevention Coordinator for Jefferson, Gilpin, and Clear Creek Counties. My name is Rebecca Mitchell. And I also stand before you as another community member, as a wife of a veteran who has lost too many of our friends and loved ones to suicide, as somebody who has been a mobile crisis responder, responding to the Colorado Crisis Hotline, sitting with our loved ones in these communities to offer them hope and help when everything feels helpless. When we make proclamations like this and when we get to be in community with one another, everything we do of connection is suicide prevention. And it is hard to say the word "suicide." It is hard to ask for help. It is hard to be the one to ask somebody if they need help. And I, as I said, I think even last year I was here, and I will remain to say the same message, that when we stand in courage and connection with one another and reach out with empathy and care, that that in and of itself has the power to change somebody's life and bring hope where hope feels like it's not tangible. Right now, hope does not feel tangible for a lot of our community members. We have struggled losing our mobile crisis team in our certain areas, but the work and the partnership with Wheat Ridge has let us continue to do the important work of suicide prevention to make sure people know that they are loved, that they are cared for, and that everybody here is on purpose. And that is what we believe, and that is what we are so grateful for, all of you, for being here today. And thank you all so much. And I just hold all of you with deep care and respect, and I offer you hope during this week when we bring awareness in such hard times. So thank you all so much. It's an honor to accept this.
Thank you for being here. This is yours. Open it up. We're going to get a little photo. Okay. This is an opportunity for members of the public to come and speak to the council on items that are not on the agenda. We'll have a chance to talk on those when we get to those. But I have a number of people signed up to speak. When I call your name, if you would please come to this podium, please introduce yourself. Please give us your first name and your last name. If you'd spell your last name, we have a better opportunity to get it correct in the records. If you tell us whether you live or work in Wheat Ridge. When you get your introduction done, the clerk is going to hit some lights in there. You have three minutes to address the council, and the green light stays on for about two minutes, and then it turns to yellow, and then it turns to red. And when it turns to red, if you would please conclude your remarks, we'll be in great shape. So I'd like to start with Becky Blackett at the podium, and Thomas King on deck.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Becky Blackett, B-L-A-C-K-E-T-T, and I have lived in Wheat Ridge since 2002. I'm a single mother and the owner of 11 properties in District 3, including 10 long-term rentals and my personal residence. I live and invest in Wheat Ridge because the city has always presented itself as a place that values sustainability, urban farming, and a connection to the land. I'm here tonight because of an inconsistency in our ordinance. Wheat Ridge allows roosters, yet if a neighbor complains about a crowing noise, the owner must silence or remove the bird. On August 6th, I received a notice of violation from my rooster. In good faith, our rooster is now wearing a crow collar, reducing the decibel level of his crow to about 90. From my home, I can hear two other roosters barking dogs, leaf blowers, lawn mowers, and lab vehicles, all with measurements around 85 to 90 decibels. In District 1, three roosters live happily on a small farm, also zoned, single residential, the same as my home. My son and I actually hatched eggs we bought from this very farm. Our chickens are Wheat Ridge natives. One family is allowed to have roosters while another in the same zoning may not, simply because of a neighbor complaint. This type of policy does not promote fairness or community. Instead, it pits neighbors against neighbor and encourages people to tell on one another, while roosters live happily without a noise-reducing collar at other backyards in the same city. Wheat Ridge grew from a rest stop during the gold rush into an agricultural and suburban community. By the 1950s, we were proudly known as the Carnation City. Agriculture is not just part of our past, it's part of our identity, and a rooster crowing was always part of this daily rhythm. Crowing isn't just noise, it's a communication. Roosters protect their flocks in established order and call the day into being. A rooster who cannot crow is like a watchdog who cannot bark. And let me tell you, there are plenty of barking dogs around the city, including my direct neighbor. I understand some people may not want to hear roosters. Rather than silencing roosters, why not limit the quantity per property? Make sure the ordinance setback is followed, and recommend that roosters remain in their coop until after a certain time. If roosters are really untenable, what will the city do about silencing the rest of the noises we hear around Wheat Ridge that may be a nuisance also? Councilmembers, the fact that Wheat Ridge allows roosters is exactly why I live here, raise my son here, and run my business here. I urge you to eliminate the subjective standards surrounding nuisances and make our ordinances consistent and fair. Let's allow roosters to be what they are and encourage the musical sounds and agricultural heritage that make Wheat Ridge unique. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Thomas King, and Kelly Bailey is on deck.
Mayor and council, thank you for letting me attend this. And 15 years ago, my wife and I bought a house on 45th Avenue between Miller and Parfitt. And at that point in time, we were babysitting two of our granddaughters. And traffic on that street was pretty construction-filled and erratic at times. And I tried to get a petition up to get a speed bump installed, and I was unsuccessful. However, now, we are midway, roughly Oak is where we penetrate, 45th. And we have five schools that women and men drop their children off, and a lot of them utilize 45th Avenue from Miller to Parfitt. It's over a quarter mile long. There is a little turnoff more court adjacent to Miller, and get a few people turn off there. But I was out in my garage the other day, and working with the garage door open, patients out, and if I had a speed limit indicator, I could probably get a lot of money for the city of Wheat Ridge. I mean, I've had people down there. My wife and I have ridden motorcycles, traveled in RVs, cars, et cetera. So we sometimes get a pretty good idea of the speed of people. And you would be surprised if you sat there at our position, just looked at the people coming down there. I had one the other day, I bet you if he was going 60, he was doing 70. And the speed limit sign is up 25 where you enter our street, and it's limited at 25 miles an hour. And what I would ask the council to consider is possibly installing a small speed bump, and you can do it in front of our house, in fact, because we're right in the middle of the, there's a 28-house Wheat Ridge owners. But we disbanded our homeowners association a couple of years ago. But I was just thinking if we could get some way of monitoring the traffic to establish the fact that it's, at times it's a drag strip. I mean, we have a very nice subdivision. We have 12, 14, excuse me, and on one side, 14 on the other.
Yes, sir.
And they are facing each other, of course.
Okay.
But anyway, I'm saying that the people, and I'm not pointing a finger, but the people who drop their children off or pick them up, they go down 45th Avenue and they don't even worry about it.
Oh, okay.
The other day, I, honest to God, I was out there in the garage again, and I went down there and he went pious, and he had to be doing damn near 80.
Mr. King?
You know.
Mr. King?
Pardon?
Your time has expired.
Okay.
But we have your message, and I want to thank you very much for coming tonight.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kelly Bailey, and it looks like Mike Tullay. I'm not quite sure of the name on that, but on deck.
Okay. Hi, my name is Kelly Bailey, and I live in Wheat Ridge. And I'm here to talk about the west side of 48th Avenue in Wadsworth. I come tonight both thankful and really frustrated. I'm thankful that to see something, say something, is alive and well, because in November of 2024, at the intersection of 48th and Wadsworth, when that part of the Wadsworth project was completed, I don't know if it was a traffic engineer, someone auditing the work that was done, but as he exited onto Wadsworth, he said, whoa, this is super not safe. I can't see cars coming up Wadsworth. I could get hit if I'm in my vehicle. So I'm thankful that he said something. I'm frustrated because I've been saying something for 16 years, back to 2008. Talking about the blind intersection, talking about the transition into the neighborhood with the Wadsworth project, specifically talking as design plans were being made. We attended the city REACH sessions. I submitted to wadsworthcomments.hgr, Inc. My 2019 email, I think, was the biggest gut punch to me when I reread it, because it specifically calls out the concerns that still exist today after three revisions of this section of the Wadsworth project and lots and lots of money put into it. So it's frustrating as a homeowner that I did see something, I did say something, and it was some random dude in November of last year that someone finally listened to them. So I encourage, if we're having community outreach and we want to hear what people are saying, then actually listen and see if what they're saying is a safety concern or is something that the neighborhood needs. I'm thankful I have more neighbors that are ready to take on this rally with me, so I'm sure it won't be the last time we talk about 48th and Wadsworth. But I'm a little disappointed that we participated in all the official processes and it fell on deaf ears. So please utilize that as you pursue the Lutheran campus. When people are saying something about it, listen to them, because I don't want them to be frustrated with the outcome. It's a beautiful plan right now, but if it's not executed that way, then they're going to be really frustrated, and they're going to be standing here saying, eight years ago, I said this. I'm also thankful that the project's almost done. So the orange cones will be going away hopefully in the spring of '26. So yay, that it all.
Thank you very much. I believe we have Mike Tully next, and Jeremy Metz on deck.
Thank you. My name is Mike Tully, T-U-L-L-Y, and I'm a resident of Wheat Ridge. I've been a resident since 1955. Before I address the council, Mayor Starke, I'd like to thank you personally for your dedicated service and your exemplary leadership during your two terms in office. It's much appreciated, and I want to convey that to you personally. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to address you. In April of this year, our neighbor, whom you've just heard from, started raising chickens on her lot. Contained in the brood were three roosters, which, as they matured, began crowing on a continual basis during the day. After an initial complaint was made, the neighbor got rid of two of the roosters. However, the remaining rooster continues to create a nuisance by its incessant, daily crowing. We are still working with community services to try and abate this issue. This has turned out to be a more arduous and frustrating process than it needs to be, but we'll see what happens. I would encourage each of you to individually track this case if you're so inclined. Also attending this meeting are several other concerned neighbors, and they're going to address you. The issue we want to bring before you is the fact that Wheat Ridge city ordinances, unlike ordinances in all of our neighboring municipalities, do not prohibit roosters in residential areas. Arvada, Golden, Denver, Lakewood, even Mountain View, all have ordinance banning roosters in residential areas. Wheat Ridge Ordinance Number 1491 provides that chickens may be raised in prescribed circumstances, but it makes no distinction between roosters and hens. And in this regard, Becky and I completely agree. There's a disconnect in the way the laws are written, and it's not clear. And what this has done is it's made the control enforcement officer's job that much harder because it's difficult to make that distinction. The reason roosters are banned in other jurisdictions is because they are an ongoing nuisance due to their persistent crowing. After over a month of putting up with this, we can all personally attest to that fact. What we're asking council to do tonight is to request that the city attorney and whatever city staff need to be involved draft either an amendment or an addition to the city code that will ban the raising and keeping of roosters, not chickens, in all areas of the city zoned residential. This would seem to be a simple fix and would greatly help the community services team deal with this specific type of nuisance. It would also align us with our adjoining municipalities, who have already taken steps to eliminate this nuisance in their communities. I'm looking forward to your response to this request. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jeremy Metz, and Kevin, I believe it's Kubata, on deck.
Good evening. My name's Jeremy Metz, M-E-T-Z. I work in Wheat Ridge, and in fact, I'm proud to serve the city of Wheat Ridge. Recently, on August 1st, I was honored to take over as the Fire Chief at West Metro Fire Rescue. So it's just a pleasure for me to be here tonight to introduce myself to you, a very important partner for us at West Metro Fire Rescue. I'm an internal candidate as Fire Chief. I've served 28 years at West Metro Fire Rescue, 33 years in the fire service here in Colorado. So I know how important it is for us as a fire district to work with our municipalities and keep you ever-present in our mind when we're going about our business. I wish that I did have a rosy picture of our financial situation of our fire district. We have also, like many of our municipalities, have had decreased funding because of recent legislative changes. So one of my main priorities is to work on long-term financial sustainability so we can continue to deliver the high-level service. We're very proud to be an all-hazard fire department, providing paramedic services, transporting patients, and providing all types of specialties for our communities. We continue to be very busy at West Metro Fire Rescue. Over the last five years, we've seen a 17% increase in our call volume, and we've just seen that impact in our personnel and the equipment and the areas that we're trying to serve. So again, it's very much of an honor for me to take over as Fire Chief at West Metro Fire Rescue and look forward to working with your leadership here in the city, your law enforcement. We work very, very well together in all of our endeavors. The thing that I would like to leave you with is to provide my encouragement for you to consider adopting the 2024 International Residential Code with the residential fire sprinklers intact, or at least consider it for townhomes. You have the ability to save lives in your community with this action, and I really appreciate your consideration, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Chief Metz. Congratulations on your new position, and we look forward to working with you in the future. Let's see. Our next speaker is Kevin Kubata, I believe, and Jay Lynn Kubata on deck.
Hello. My name is Kevin Kubasta, K-U-B-A-S-T-A, and I've lived in Wheat Ridge for, well, since 1992, 30-some-plus years, owned some commercial properties and houses. I enjoy Wheat Ridge, and again, I want to thank you guys for letting me speak today. Sorry. I guess I'm just here for the rooster issue. We do have goats, bees, and chickens in the neighborhood, and we respect that, that's no problem. But apparently, some of the chickens can grow up to be roosters. And that's where we kind of ran into a problem. And I wouldn't even mind if a rooster just crowed like, you know, every 10, 15, 20 minutes or something, but we've got one that seems to like to crow, oh, like every 15, 30 seconds sometimes. Lucky for me, it really enjoys to do it when I get home from work and want to relax on the patio, and I just have a perfect, direct shot of getting to hear that. So again, as I respect, Wheat Ridge, lived in Wheat Ridge for a long time, raised children through all the Wheat Ridge school systems, and again, respect the diversity of the area. I do understand that we have farming, and I think that's important, but I do understand that I've lived in a house for 30-plus years and really enjoy it, and now I've actually considered selling my house and moving somewhere where we could actually sit on our patio at night without having to want to go choke a rooster. No. And again, I respect people's rights for doing that. We've been, I thought it was kind of cool having goats and chickens and stuff, but I just can't deal with that. I don't know what to say. So I would also support maybe limiting roosters to agricultural land rather than have them be next door to everybody. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jelaine Kubasta.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Jelaine Kubasta, K-U-B-A-S-T-A. I'm Kevin's wife, and as you've heard already, we have some roosters that live next door to us. We were a little leery in the beginning, but the goats and the bees and the chickens all seemed fine until the roosters grew up and started crowing. An example of how this rooster crows, Saturday morning, I was awake at 8:00, and for the first hour, I didn't track how much it did, because I was just trying not to have to track. It's very cumbersome. And it probably crowed 50 times from 8:00 to 9:00. From 9:00 to 1:00, I had two full pages, front and back, two columns each, of how often this rooster crowed. I don't think roosters should be allowed in our neighborhoods. If you have property in a place where the rooster can be a rooster, great. This rooster is reacting to things around it like squirrels, and I can't fault the rooster. That's what a rooster should do, but it shouldn't be in a neighborhood where it has to deal with this. We've lived here a long time. We live in an area that has the bigger plots than normal, and so we've seen things come and go. But this is affecting my happiness. This is a nuisance. My grandson was woken up from a nap inside my house on Sunday from a rooster crowing. So I would please ask that we look at this law, especially since it's not especially since it's not what most other cities around us do, and reconsider some changes need to be made here. And I know that not everybody supports this and doesn't see it as something that needs to change, but it really does once it affects you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's all of the speakers that I have signed up to speak. I have one speaker that has signed up, perhaps online. I want to check with our clerk. Stanley Evans has signed up to speak on something. I don't know what item he's speaking. Is he with us now?
He is.
Clerk. Mr. Evans, are you planning to speak on Agenda Item Number 2, or do you want to speak now under Public Comment?
This would be speaking on Public Comment.
Okay. If you would please introduce yourself. You'll have three minutes to address the council.
Thank you. I will be brief. My name is Stanley Evans, E-B-A-N-S. This will be quick and brief. I want to write and thank you all for your time. This is also in support and writing to express a concern regarding the interpretation of Section 26-606 of the municipal code, specifically around the term "chicken", whether it includes roosters as a resident interested in responsible poultry keeping. I reviewed the ordinance and noticed that while it outlines requirements for poultry housing and setbacks, it does not explicitly define whether roosters are permitted. This ambiguity could lead to confusion among residents and potentially result in unintended violations or neighbor disputes. I live in Wheat Ridge. I have been homeowner here for the better part of four years. I'd also like to support, voice my support for Mr. Tully's recent request for clarification on this matter. His inquiry reflects broader concerns shared by the community members who want to ensure compliance while maintaining peaceful neighborhood conditions. Roosters, while part of poultry classifications, are often restricted to noise concerns, and clear language in the ordinance would just be a very big help to residents to understand what is and isn't allowed. I respectfully urge this council to consider updating the ordinance to explicitly state whether roosters are included under the term "chicken" or to provide guidance on how this term currently is interpreted in enforcement. I just want to thank all of you for your time, and I wish you all a good evening.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes all of the folks that I have signed up to speak on Public Comment. With that, we will go to Agenda Item Number 1. This is our consent agenda. Councilor Dozeman, would you please introduce this item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item Number 1A is a Resolution 392025, a resolution of support for an application to the Jefferson County Open Space Trails Partnership Program. So at the issue, Jefferson County Open Space Trails Partnership Program allows communities within the county to apply for funding in the amount of up to 50% of the costs of projects related to regional trails. A city council resolution of support is required as part of the application. Staff would like to apply for this funding to support mill and overlay work at the parking lots within Anderson and Prospect Parks in 2026, which both serve as trailheads for the Clear Creek Trail. Item 1B, a resolution giving notice of and calling for an election on a proposed amendment to the Home Rule Charter to be held at the regular municipal election on November 4th, 2025. The issue, the City Charter calls for a municipal election in every odd year to coincide with the elected terms for the offices of the mayor, clerk, treasurer, and council. City council will refer one ballot question to the electorate of the city of Wheat Ridge for the November 4th, 2025, regular municipal election. Therefore, per Section 16.8 of the City Charter, the city of Wheat Ridge is required to formally call a regular municipal election for this date. Item 1C, a resolution approving a loan agreement with renewal Wheat Ridge in the amount of $1,200,000 for acquisition of property at 4593 Parpet Street for expansion and consolidation of the public works and parks operations facilities. At issue, a recommendation from the facility's master plan is to co-locate and expand the public works and parks operations facilities at one site. The recommended direction is to acquire a parcel adjacent to the existing public works operations facility to make this expansion possible. The city was contacted by the owner of the property at 4593 Parpet Street to determine if the city would be interested in purchasing the property. City council entered into a contract to purchase this property for $1,100,000 on July 28, 2025. Renewal Wheat Ridge has approved a loan in the amount of $1,200,000 to assist the city in purchasing this property, including appropriate due diligence and closing costs. And finally, Item 1D, a motion authorizing payment to American West Construction LLC in the total amount of $332,855 for the 39th Avenue and Hoy Court emergency stormwater line repair. A stormwater line unexpectedly failed and resulted in a large sinkhole near the intersection of 39th Avenue and Hoy Court. American West Construction had previously done emergency stormwater work for the city, and staff solicited them to complete this work.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve Agenda Items 1A through 1D?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second by Mayor Protim Stites. With the clerk, please poll the council.
All ayes, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you. We will now go to Agenda Item Number 2. Councilor Larson, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. This is Council Bill 142025, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at 11571 and 11581, West 44th Avenue, from Agricultural 1 to planned residential development with approval of an outlined development plan. At issue, the applicant is requesting approval of a zone change from Agricultural 1 to planned residential development with an outlined development plan for a 39-unit cohousing community with a common house and shared amenities located at 11571 and 11581, West 44th Avenue.
Thank you very much. This is an ordinance on second reading. It is quasi-judicial, and it is a public hearing. I am going to open the public hearing, and I had a question for our attorney. Are we doing swearing in the oath?
No, I think the procedure that you previously used has been if all persons who intend to speak, by speaking, you consent and affirm that you'll tell the truth as you know it, which is, I think, the kind of once, kind of all-size-fits-all admonition that you give, that I would recommend you give at the beginning of the hearing, so anyone choosing to speak has therefore affirmed that they will tell the truth as they know it.
Okay. So I've opened the public hearing. If you intend to speak on this item, you affirm that you will tell the truth as you know it in this matter. Thank you. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We do, Mayor. Stephanie Stevens, senior planner, is here this evening. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Stephanie Stevens, and I'm a planner with the City of Wheat Ridge Community Development Department, presenting case number WZ2309, which is a request for approval of a zone change from Agricultural 1 to planned residential development with an outlined development plan for a 39-unit cohousing community at property located at 11571 and 11581, West 44th Avenue. I would like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file, the zoning ordinance, the comprehensive plan, and this digital presentation. The property is within the city of Wheat Ridge. All appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met. Therefore, city council has jurisdiction to hear this case. Clicker is not working. Hold on just a moment, please. Oh, something happened. Oh, okay, thank you. Okay, Ali's got me. All right, this site is located on the north side of West 44th Avenue between Tabor and Robb Street. It's made up of two unplatted lots and is approximately 3.33 acres in size. It currently contains a 716-square-foot, single-unit dwelling built in 1924, a 1,484-square-foot, single-unit dwelling built in 1889, and multiple accessory structures. Thanks. The site is currently zoned Agricultural 1. Adjacent properties to the north are also A1, an agricultural property with a single-unit home. To the west is Residential 2 and Residential 3, with single-unit townhomes and duplexes. To the south across 44th Avenue is R3 and vacant, and to the east is restricted commercial along 44th Avenue with a commercial use and small-lot, single-unit residential development, zoned planned residential development. The applicant is requesting approval of a zone change from A1 to planned development with an outlined development plan for a 39-unit cohousing development with a common house and shared amenities. The code allows for processing of ODPs and SDPs concurrently or sequentially. The applicant has chosen a two-step sequential option, and SDP and subdivision would come after the ODP if approved. I'll go through the ODP document, then talk about the criteria of review and staff findings. The ODP establishes the planned development zoning. It's two sheets and included in your staff report. First page is a cover sheet with certification and signature blocks for the property owners, planning commission, city council, and mayor. There's also a character of development statement, list of permitted uses, development standards, and other standard notes. Second page includes conceptual layout of the property, including access, open space, and lot layout. The ODP is a property-specific zoning document that establishes underlying development standards, which run with the land if approved and cannot be changed without going through the process again. The ODP represents a phased approach to development with two distinct planning areas in which the northern portion of the site proposes stricter regulations to ensure sensitivity to adjacent properties. Planning Area 1, the southern portion of the site, abutting 44th Avenue on the right side of the screen, is to contain the housing. While Planning Area 2, the north portion to the left, adjacent to the existing lower residential uses, is to remain in an agricultural state. Two access points are proposed near the east and west borders of the site, leading to a looped perimeter drive that provides vehicular circulation, a pedestrian network, fire access, and utility infrastructure. Primary buildings are located inside the looped drive with multi-unit and common house buildings proposed along 44th Avenue, transitioning to townhomes, duplexes, and carriage houses moving north, and central common open space in the center between the buildings. Planning Area 2, located north of the looped drive, is reserved primarily as open space with resident amenities. Six-foot-tall opaque fencing would border the site around the perimeter. Amenities are provided through a combination of the common house, central common green, as well as an exercise studio, community kitchen, indoor/outdoor dining, a natural pool and pool shed, community gardens, a garden shed, a bike barn and storage, a mackerel shed for woodworking and welding, and a dog run area and dog wash. While the site is required to be subdivided, there's no intent to create individual lots. For the separate buildings, there is, this is a unique cohousing type of situation. Development standards are generally to follow the city's R3, Residential 3 standards, with some standards borrowed from Mixed Use Neighborhood, or MUN, and A1 to create a unique zoning framework. The effect consolidates density closer to 44th Avenue and adjacent to more intense uses. This is offset by transitions in height and stricter standards in Planning Area 2, where adjacent to low density. In the spirit of providing a high-quality development through a planned development, the project also proposes onsite parking and circulation, increased open space, onsite detention, and customized architectural and design standards. Now on to the development standards. Next slide, please. Thank you. Oh, nope, sorry. Go back. That was my fault. The allowable uses in Planning Area 1 include single-unit dwellings, in which could be attached, detached carriage house style along with duplexes, multi-unit residential, and standard residential accessory uses to match those permitted in base residential zones, such as R3 and MUN. Planning Area 2 is proposed to allow residential accessory structures only. No dwelling units would be permitted in this planning area. Pursuant to City Charter, the density limit is 21 dwelling units per acre, which would result in a maximum of 69 units on this site, where 39 units are proposed. The proposed density is comparable to what would be allowed in the city's R3 Zone District, which is a maximum of 12 dwelling units per acre. The units are organized so highest density is focused along 44th and gradually decrease to complement surrounding neighbors. Parking requirements are proposed to match the city's Mixed Use Neighborhood District, requiring a minimum of one space per unit, and also in line with MUN, is guest parking is required at the discretion of the director and is planned for, as shown on the ODP. Two access points are proposed along 44th Avenue, forming that looped perimeter drive. And full water quality and detention for the site would be required, will be required, and is planned to be provided in an underground system on the western portion of the site towards the bottom of the screen. The development is not anticipated to create negative impacts on traffic operations for the surrounding streets or the proposed access. The analysis of the site-generated traffic concluded that anticipated traffic volumes of the proposed development will be minor, with up to 20 trips expected in the peak hour. Landscaping and open space is required at a rate of 40%, of which 50% would need to be usable and 50% landscaped, which exceeds city's typical standards. The ODP sets development standards, which compare to city-standard zone districts, as shown in this table. Note that the project proposes a three-story limit on the multi-unit, a two-story limit on townhomes, duplexes, and carriage houses, and a single-story limit on accessory structures. Proposed maximum height is 35 feet for multi-unit, 32 feet for single-unit duplex and carriage homes, and 15 to 25 feet for accessory structures. Maximum building coverage is set to a maximum of 60%. And Build 2 is required along 44th Avenue in lieu of setback, meaning the buildings would need to be pushed up to the street, as would be required of the Architectural and Site Design Manual. Rear setbacks is a minimum of 25 feet, and bulk plane would also apply as it would with standard residential zones. In alignment with the required Build 2, the ODP calls for a building-forward design with an enhanced street-facing facade with entry enhancements. Heights transition from three-story to the south, decreasing to two-story and down to single-story in the rear. Articulation and variation are also required, and standards set forth in the Architectural and Site Design Manual would apply. We use several criteria to evaluate zone change requests, which includes consistency with the comprehensive plan. A full analysis of the criteria for consideration is included in your staff report. And this image on the screen is an excerpt from the current comprehensive plan, which provides guidance in terms of land use. The property is shown and is located in the yellow neighborhood area and along a neighborhood commercial corridor. The neighborhood designation encourages improvement of underutilized properties. The proposed zone change is consistent with the neighborhood designation, including addressing the need for a greater variety along the corridor. Additionally, the 44th Avenue Savary Plan calls for a high variety of housing as a priority west of Kipling and along the corridor, for which this project complies. And the plan also iterates the need to have compatible development within established neighborhoods. In vision, Wheat Ridge will soon be replaced by an updated comprehensive plan, the city plan. And while it is not yet adopted, the draft plan is published to the public and coming before you soon. And future development of this site will occur under the new plan. Therefore, staff have also evaluated the proposed zone change against the draft city plan to confirms it aligns with this guidance. The housing options allowed by the proposed zone change directly support the city plan core value to be inclusive and the principle of serving a mix of incomes. It also aligns with the desired outcome of peaceful coexistence by thoughtfully applying and calibrating form and use tools based on the features of adjacent properties. For this location, the city plan says that a wide variety of housing types ranging from single-unit residential up to multi-unit residential along 44th Avenue are appropriate. And the proposed site design responds to all of the form and design recommendations of the city plan as well. It incorporates Build 2 and setbacks that match those surrounding. Increase where adjacent to low-density residential to the north. Bulk plane inform requirements avoid imposition of additional heights on adjacent properties. Appropriate screening and buffering are included, and parking needs are addressed on-site. Finally, the city plan includes an implementation strategy to support housing development to meet community goals. This includes reviewing the zoning code to allow housing production that supports businesses, specifically calling out 44th Avenue as a corridor in need of additional housing. This zone change implements this strategy by providing new housing stock along 44th Avenue. As a requirement of the zone change process, a virtual neighborhood meeting was held in 2022. Three members of the public attended the meeting, and the notes from the meeting were included in your report. We sent the application on referral to service districts, as well as completed an internal review. We did not receive any concerns or objections from these agencies. Before the hearing, the property was posted for 15 days, and mailing letters were sent to property owners and tenants within a 1,000-foot radius, and the application was posted on Wheat Ridge speaks. We did not receive any comments in advance of this hearing. Planning Commission recommended approval at the July 17, 2025, public hearing. With this, staff believes that the zone change request- With this, staff believes that the zone change request meets the criteria. It allows for a compatible and transitional use. The area has seen an increasing mix of housing types and densities, as well as additional commercial investment, and the proposed zoning complements that diversity of land uses and helps to strengthen residential and commercial markets. So ultimately, staff is recommending approval of the request. City Council is the final approval authority on this application, and if City Council approves the O D P, the zone change is approved, and the application can move forward to specific development plan or site planning. That concludes my presentation, and the applicant is here as well to give a presentation too. Also here for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Appreciate the opportunity to speak on the project a bit more tonight. As, I'll try to elaborate a little bit more. Stephanie mentioned a lot of the finer points of the project, and I'll-
Would you please introduce yourself?
Oh, sorry. Yes, Bob Wilson, W I L S O N. I'm with Caddis Collaborative in Boulder. Although I now live and work in Boulder, I am a former resident of Wheat Ridge, so I'm particularly interested in seeing this project advance. It's very exciting. Anyway, what I'll try to do is explain a little bit more about the project in general, what cohousing is, and some of the, what we feel are some of the strong community benefits to a project like this. We've got a, pulled together a good team so far, a good consulting team of Martin Wiley from Edgemont Consulting, T J C Civil Engineering, and Studio Campo for landscape. This here is the current staff at Caddis Collaborative. Staff of about ten right now. This is the consulting team that I just mentioned. And so effectively, what cohousing is, it's a home ownership model that is largely predicated on the idea that the future residents, in effect, become the ownership group as opposed to a speculative developer coming in. So it's less about profit, it's more about values and really bringing the community together. It's intentional, intentional community is really what it is, and the idea behind Blue Columbine is that we're offering an array of housing typologies to help address a larger demographic income levels and ultimately bring together a group of homeowners that really want to share in this idea of being more invested, I would say, in how they live and wanting to interact and really know their neighbors and interact on that level and really feel more rooted in where they live. And that's what we're hoping to achieve with cohousing. So cohousing, there are about, I think, two hundred or so projects in the U.S. right now. Roughly twenty of those are in Colorado. I think ten are currently in the works right now, and we, where Caddis is located in the north end of Boulder, there are a couple of very successful cohousing communities, Wild Sage and Silver Sage, that really I feel like espouse a lot of those things that we're endeavoring with Blue Columbine, and that is providing the kind of groundwork and environment where people can really get to know each other. So as I mentioned, again, driven by values, building relationships, providing a balance of community and privacy, and really encouraging participation. You know, people taking turns, for example, cooking a meal every weekend for the group as a whole. And again, these, as I mentioned, a multitude of different housing types are what the model is based on. There is also, as Stephanie mentioned, a common house that is very heavily amenitized, so it's just one more opportunity for folks to come together. Yeah, as I mentioned before, these are roughly the two hundred communities around the country, those that are in Colorado. And if you're interested in learning a little bit more about what cohousing is all about, this is a great, great website to become more informed. These are some images. I believe these are images from Silver Sage or Wild Sage community up in Boulder that I mentioned earlier. And so some of the example projects that we've been affiliated with are in various locations, some are here in Colorado, some in Nashville, Tulsa, Houston, and Bozeman as well. So all of these are following roughly in the same, I would say, the unit number may vary a little bit, but it's the same idea of bringing a multitude of different housing types into this model. This is, these are some images from Wild Sage, in this case, thirty-four homes on an acre and a half. Silver Sage, sixteen. Our Wood Commons, thirty-six. Treehouse Village, thirty. Cohousing Houston, thirty-six. Bozeman, twenty-eight. So each of those examples are, you know, Blue Columbine is maybe on the upper end of the number of units, but that's also a function of the overall site, sites for-. And then these are just some other examples of housing light projects as well around the country. And so for Blue Columbine specifically, you know, I don't want to be too repetitive of what Stephanie already covered, but you can see from this plan, Forty-Fourth being on the far right side of this plan, north is to the left. I would say, aside from the housing itself, which you can see is sort of running in a linear fashion, everything is sort of looking inward towards that common green, and that's really one of the main points of this model, is that it's providing sort of a forum and natural green space for folks to have those sort of daily interactions with each other to help foster that sort of sense of belonging. This was just an early, a lesser diagram of how that interaction and circulation happens on a daily basis. And as I mentioned, the common house, very heavily amenitized, with sort of a common dining space taking up most of the space, something sort of short of a full commercial kitchen, but something that can be utilized for, you know, larger meals and that sort of thing, kids' room, living room, exercise studio, laundry, guest rooms, et cetera. And then, as Arden mentioned, the common green is really kind of the hub of the community as a whole. These are the various unit types. The unit type A is what we're using to designate the carriage house unit. Units B and C are a couple of different, some of the smaller, flat-style units that are above the common house. Unit D starts to get a little bit larger, it's on the eastern side of the plan, another stacked flat. Then E is the townhouse unit, and then the duplex unit is unit F. This is a perspective rendering, sort of looking from the southwest towards that western drive access aisle. This is sort of the main entry to the common house, to the site, and what we're really trying to achieve here is something that has a very translucent and strong presence towards Forty-Fourth. This, as has been mentioned, is the three-story component that, as the site works towards the north, steps down to two stories. This is up above, sort of looking from the southeast corner of Forty-Fourth is down right there on the lower left. You can see we've got some outdoor areas as part of this common house space as well. And this is looking backwards, I view from the southeast, or looking southeast, I should say. What you're seeing on kind of the lower left there are the duplexes, and then the townhomes across, towards the east or to the left of the screen, and then you can sort of see the project sort of steps back up towards Forty-Fourth. Forty-Fourth is running, sort of diagonally across the upper right portion of the page. This is a conceptual rendering from sort of the upper circulation of the, this is, I think, looking from what we're calling the D units, I believe, or maybe it's, maybe it's some of the larger stacked flat units. Anyway, looking back towards what you're seeing over on the right-hand side are the carriage units, and then the portion of the building in the distance there is the courtyard side of the common house and B and C units. This is looking sort of from the common house, portion of the plan, back to the north, the townhomes on your right, duplexes on your left. And with that, we'll take any questions. Also, online as well is Brian Bowen. He may, he'll be able to answer any other questions regarding cohousing specifically as well.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wilson. Mr. Goff, does that conclude the presentation tonight?
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you. We would open this up to the public to speak on this project. At this time, I have no one signed up to speak, so I will go to questions from council. Counselor Olm.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. Just a couple of questions. One is, I noticed in the one sheet, the utilities, it has several references to condo. Was that an earlier iteration?
Reference to, excuse me?
Condo?
To condos?
Yeah.
Excuse me, that's, you know, I think that's just the nature of the ownership entity. Something like the stacked flats, for example, would be based, I believe, on a condo model. I mean, we're still talking about home ownership, but that would be the nature of that type of ownership.
And then what was the reasoning between having the multi-units at thirty-five-feet height and the non-multi-units at thirty-two-feet height max?
Well, that was largely, I think, in response to some of the guidance from the recently adopted guidelines, where really what we're trying to do is provide more of an urban presence on Forty-Fourth, where we have three-story elements, and then really in response to the adjacent properties being, in some cases, agriculture or a single family, trying to step down proportionally what those buildings or how they relate, I guess, to their context.
And then just one last question. Do you have, it's okay if you don't know the answer, do you know roughly like how much land you save by using the rain gardens and then the underground detention?
Well, I, yeah, I can't, I don't know that I can answer-
And that's fine.
-very intelligently exactly how much space is preserved, but, you know, I'm not sure if our civil engineers is on to be able to answer that, but, you know, I would say to be able to utilize that strategy as opposed to otherwise utilizing green space, I think is ultimately a huge benefit.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I got a little bit ahead of myself. While there's no one here in the council chambers to speak on this, I do have several folks that have signed up online to speak that I would like to invite to speak at this time. I have Brian Bowen and Lisa Ramos, if you are joining us online. Brian Bowen, would you please introduce yourself and speak on this agenda item?
Hello there, can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir, I can.
Great, thanks very much. My name is Brian Bowen, B O W E N, and it's Brian with a Y, and I'm actually just part of the applicant team, so I'm here with Bob to help answer some questions, so I don't need to speak to the item as a member of the public.
I'm sorry, I didn't really understand what you said. Would you please say that a little more clearly?
Yes, I'm sorry about that. I am not speaking as a member of the public. I am part of the applicant's team, so I'm here to help answer questions with Bob.
Okay, if you're here to answer questions, then we will see if anyone has any questions for you. And how about Lisa Ramos? Is she part of the development or a member of the public speaking on this one?
Hi, my name is Lisa Ramos, and that's R A M O S. I am not a member of the professional team that presented tonight. I am a member of the Blue Columbine community who is hoping to be a homeowner and would just wanted to speak briefly, let you know first, I'm not currently a Wheat Ridge resident, although I'm hoping to be. I've been a thirty-year resident in Denver, and I'm just one of several members who are hoping to bring this community to life in Wheat Ridge, and I just wanted to speak as an individual, so you would know this is not your typical, or what I imagine is a typical, housing development brought in by somebody developing a housing community for profit. These really are folks like myself who are committed to communal living, not in any particularly ideological way, but because we believe that's a healthy way to live. We do believe in being good members of the larger community and being good neighbors, and I wanted you to know that too. That is a value I would say we hold as a, as a community of folks who hope to reside here. So I just encourage adoption of this. We're also quite excited about the location and being in Wheat Ridge and how well this community seems to fit into the direction that Wheat Ridge is going as part of town. So just wanted to put a human face to what we're trying to do here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your comments. With that, we will go back to questions from council and go to Counselor Weaver.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a quick process question. So can you just remind all of us, we're talking about the O D P, so we're really just talking about the zone change tonight, and then it will come back as a site plan? Just so we don't get in the weeds on the plan and the housing and the, and I do want to ask a question about what a natural pool is, because that sounded really cool, but...
That's a great question and a good clarification. So a planned development is a two-step process. Council is seeing the zoning tonight, so we're setting the general parameters. We always request a graphic to accompany that, so it's a little bit better to visualize. So that graphic is showing some of the minimums and maximums. A specific development plan, which is like a site plan, will advance to the planning commission only if the zoning is approved tonight.
Great, great. So since we're really only talking about the zoning, I do love the plan. I've heard great things about cohousing around some of the other projects that are around Denver. What is a natural pool? And I noticed there was a beach, and I just, I was just curious about that. And then I have one last question, but-
I can answer the natural pool.
Brian, you want to help me out on that?
Yeah, I can do that. The natural pool was an idea that the landscape architect had instead of a kind of typical concrete, chemical-based pool to provide a more beautiful swimming environment that's treated somewhat with some pumping and possibly some treatments, but primarily using vegetation. And so it's a much lower carbon emissions and much higher aesthetic value way of having a swimming spot on your property.
Thanks. My last question was mostly for staff. I noticed that the public meeting about this was three years ago. Will there be a reach out to the community in some aspect of this? Just because I'm sure there have been new people that have come in.
Yeah, it's been a slower-going process, for sure. It started three years ago, but there has been continual notification for all of our mailing notices and things, and some of the neighbors have come in. We've kind of chatted about it with the developer, with the neighbors, to kind of try to find that negotiating middle. So there has been ongoing communication, but I do realize the neighborhood meeting was quite some time ago now.
Yeah. Just wanted to make sure there was some ongoing communication since then.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a, let's keep it to five questions. The first one has to do with the property itself, and since we're rezoning what is described as an unplanted piece of property, that, that property, do a little bit of research into that property, and it goes back a long way. County records show that it was, that property was in probate back in the 80s, and then it was transferred to a trust before it was purchased in 2023. There are two residences listed on the property. One was built in the 1889, in 1889, and the other one was built in 1924. First off, is the property occupied?
No, the property is not occupied right now.
Okay, and what will happen to the buildings? I guess two parts of the, what will happen to the two homes that are there? And do they have any sort of historical significance that we may want to think about? Some kind of preservation?
The assessment that was provided to us was that there is no historical value that could be saved with those buildings. However, we'll probably be doing some level of deconstruction. We're looking at getting some deconstruction bids right now, and if there's a possibility of reusing some of those building materials on site, then we'll do that.
And when you say reconstruction, would the, would that building be moved?
Oh, sorry, deconstruction.
Oh, de, I'm sorry. Thank you. That helps a lot. The, can you help me understand the relationship between Cadis Collaborative and Blue Columbine?
Cadis Collaborative is the architect, and Blue Columbine are the future residents. This is a project where the future residents put their own money into the project to create the kind of community that they want to live in themselves, and so they basically become the developer.
So they're already our investors in the property?
Yes, future residents, yeah.
Okay. And Councilman Ohm asked the question earlier, and I, if you, just one more time, please, explain how this property differs from a, we know that the townhomes, townhome developments are different than condos, where you have a difference in the ownership of the land underneath the building. This sounds more like a condominium. I live in a condominium development, I'm on an HOA. The condominium association owns the property, and all of the exteriors and the individual owners own that building, and that's, that's pretty much the extent of it. Is there a significant difference in how the ownership will be set up here? And are the owners required to be residents?
Yes, that's a good question. The property won't be subdivided. The reason that we need to go through the subdivision process is to eliminate the lot lines between the two existing parcels. The entire project will be owned using condo association format, which is the closest thing available to us in Colorado's state code to a cooperative ownership. This allows people to own their individual unit and a share of the adjacent or the surrounding common elements, like you mentioned. The differentiation between a typical condo association and the cohousing community that's using condo regulations to create ownership is that the future residents are involved in the design process from the very beginning. They're the ones who found the land, who hired us, and we've used a series of workshops to define what the housing type would be. The site amenities, the unit plans have all been designed collaboratively with the future residents. And then after move-in, there's a rich social program, I guess, that goes along with it. They share meals two to three times a week in the common house, cooking for each other, caring for each other. The grounds are typically self-managed. There's no HOA company that manages them for the people, and they're basically volunteer-run. And there are about 200 of these in the country and about 20, I think, in Colorado right now.
And I'm sorry, that question about residents, owners being required to live on the property?
I don't know that we're able to legally require that, but that's typically how it is done. There are, once in a while, investors or maybe even residents who own two units to rent one out to someone else, but it's almost always owner occupied.
Okay, thank you. The, the plans show that there is a ditch that apparently runs through the property, and it's designated as being dissolved. Is this something that Columbine has done, or is this something that was already in place?
That was something that was already in place, done by previous owners.
Does, yeah, because it's the first time I've heard of a ditch being dissolved. And I wonder if that involves bleach, or is it, I'm kidding. Well, all right, never mind, since it's something that already happened before, before Blue Columbine came on scene, right?
Yes, that's correct. It was abandoned some years ago, and this is just officially.
The ditch was abandoned and then, and then?
Correct.
Okay. And then the, this, the road, the street that comes through there, is that considered a public street, or is that private?
No, that will be a private street. Sorry, Brian.
And, and so all of the, the road maintenance, the snow plowing and whatnot is the responsibility of Blue Columbine. Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Point of order. I just would like to remind Councilmember Larson that this is zoning, not site plan, so these are all questions for site planning. They're out of context, is what I'm saying.
Okay, that's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any other, before I close the public hearing and ask for a motion, are there any other questions from council? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, and Councilor Larson, may I have a motion on this item?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill 14-2025, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at 11571 and 11581 West 44th Avenue from Agricultural 1 to plan residential development with approval of an outline development plan on second reading, ordered published, and then to take effect 15 days after final publication, as provided by Section 5.11 of the Charter.
Second.
A motion and a second by Councilor Dozeman is their discussion on the motion. Councilor Holtein.
Thank you. I just want to say that I'm a huge fan of cohousing and I'm excited to see a concept coming to Wheat Ridge, and I know it's, it's a really, I think, creative and fun use of the site, and just knowing how cohousing works and how communities operate within it, it's just really exciting to see sort of the creativity that was brought. But that creativity is not at the expense of our existing adopted plans. I like the balancing between some of our existing zoning, some just really thoughtful approach to the site, and looking forward to seeing the next round. Thank you.
Councilor Larson.
And thank you, Mayor, and I am supporting this rezoning effort. First off, because it will be a very clear addition to the 4th District. It'll be in addition to 44th Avenue. In fact, that end, the western end of 44th Avenue in District 4 is slowly, but it is becoming a more of a housing-friendly neighborhood. I think that's part of the city's plan. So again, I support this effort, and I wish the developers all the, all the best.
Thank you. Councilor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank, say thank you for bringing some diverse housing. There's already a lot of diversity housing going on, but this is something different, unique, and so, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And at first, I was a little weary of losing some more agricultural land in District 4, but I think this is a very innovative concept, and I really appreciate that the investors are the residents that are going to be living here and that they help and facilitate, you know, the design, and they found the property, and, you know, it's, it's, it says something about not only our community and that we're attracting that diverse set of housing, but also that community, which I think is characteristic of Wheat Ridge. And so I think that this is going to be a wonderful addition to District 4. My only concern would potentially be the traffic near 44th and Tabor in regards to some of the other commercial businesses along that site, but I think as we get further down the road with the 44th Avenue subarea plan, we'll kind of see those issues start to be mitigated. But I also want to say thank you for bringing this opportunity to Wheat Ridge. I think it's wonderful, and it really supports what we've been trying to do as far as attracting a diverse set of housing and also affordable housing. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilor Snell.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief. I just wanted to also echo my colleague's words. This is a really interesting concept, and now I have something to learn about between now and when we, when it comes back to us, because I don't know enough about it. But I think it's an excellent idea, and just the whole concept of the social connectedness of the residents, I think that's well-needed in our, in our world today. So I really am excited to see it move forward, and I appreciate Wheat Ridge being considered. So thanks.
Thank you. If there's no further discussion of the motion, will the clerk please poll the council?
All ayes, no nays. Motion carries.
Thank you. We will now go to Agenda Item Number 3. Mayor Protim Stites, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill Number 15-2025, an ordinance submitting a ballot question to the voters of the city at the November 4, 2025 regular municipal election to amend the Wheat Ridge Home Rule Charter to eliminate offices of the elected clerk and the elected city treasurer. At issue, Chapter 3 of the city's charter establishes that there shall be an elected city clerk, Section 3.7 through 3.8, and an elected city treasurer, Section 3.9 through 3.10. Council is proposing a charter amendment to the city, or to the Wheat Ridge electorate that eliminates the elected roles of clerk and treasurer at the November 4, 2025 municipal election.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on second reading. It is not quasi-judicial. It is a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing, and Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We don't have anything else this evening. We're here for any questions you may have, but if this does pass this evening, the city clerk will send this language to the county. I think it's due on September 5 or 6-ish, coming up here, so that will be the next step, and it'll be on the ballot in November.
Okay, thank you. We would invite members of the public to speak on this. At this time, we have no one signed up in city council chambers to speak, and we have no one joining us online to speak, so I will go to questions from council. Seeing none, will Mayor Protim Stites, may I have a motion on this item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill 15-
Wait a minute. I'm going to close the public hearing, and now may I have a motion on this item? I've been there.
Been there. I move to approve Council Bill Number 15-2025, an ordinance submitting a ballot question to the voters of the city at the November 4, 2025 regular municipal election to amend the Wheat Ridge Home Rule Charter to eliminate offices of the elected city clerk and the elected city treasurer on second reading, ordered published, and then to take effect immediately, as permitted by Section 5.11 of the Charter.
Second.
Oh, we have a motion, a second by Councilor Ohm. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
All ayes, no nays. Motion carries.
Thank you. We will now go now to Agenda Item Number 4. Councilor Ohm, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. Council Bill 16-2025, an ordinance approving the sale of city-owned real property and authorizing execution of an agreement for the same. At issue, the city has the opportunity to sell property known as the Town Center Park, located at 4084 Wadsworth Boulevard. Town Center Park, a 0.7 acre parcel purchased in 1982, was closed in 2020 due to safety concerns when it became a magnet for unwelcome behavior and was no longer serving as its intended use as a gathering space for the shopping center. The sale of the parcel, combined with another 0.5 acre site acquired as part of the Wadsworth Improvement Project, has long been the city's intention, once the Wadsworth construction was nearing completion.
Read the next sentence, please.
Section 16.5 of the city charter states that unanimous approval of the entire council by ordinance shall be necessary for sale or disposition of the designated parkland.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on second reading. It is not quasi-judicial. It is a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
Just real briefly to add a little bit more context, this was designated parkland by the city, and there was a reverter on this property from Jefferson County Open Space, but they did relocate that reverter for us to the new Green on 38th Avenue for the park. So we believe the Green has replaced this parcel, this property, as the park for this area, so we are asking for unanimous support from city council this evening. We do have this property out on the market, along with the next agenda item, the second parcel that we're asking to sell. We are receiving some initial interest, no contracts at this point.
Thank you. We invite the public to speak on this item. At this time, I have no one signed up in council chambers, and I have no one joining us online, so I'll open this up for questions of council, of staff. Any questions of council on staff before I close the public hearing and ask for a motion? Seeing none, I want to close the public hearing, and Councilor Ohm, may I have a motion on this item?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill 16-2025, an ordinance approving the sale of city-owned real property and authorize execution of agreement for the same on second reading, ordered published, and that takes effect 15 days after final publication, as provided by Section 5.11 of the Charter.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Councilor Holtein. Is there discussion on the motion? Mayor Protim Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to support this. I just wanted to say I might have been the only person that's ever actually used this park as a park, because there used to be a TCBY right there, and if you got good grades in school, my grandma would take me down there, we'd get TCBY and eat at that park. So, but I'm happy to see it go.
Okay, Councilor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. I think when I first moved to Wheat Ridge, I was not a huge fan of the town park, and I just want to say, the green is mountains, mountains above what this Town Center Park is, so really excited about. I think that where the Town Center Park is now is going to be a wonderful opportunity for commercial. Thank you.
All right, Councilor Weaver.
I just think we should honor the fact that this was a little park that was before its time, and, you know, like, it's not its fault. So it's going on to a new life.
All right, thank you. Okay, hearing, seeing no further discussion on the motion, will the clerk please poll the council?
All ayes, no nays. Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. With that, we will go to Agenda Item Number 5. Councilor Holtein, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce Council Bill Number 17-2025, an ordinance approving the sale of city-owned real property and authorizing execution of an agreement for the same. At issue, the city has the opportunity to sell property acquired through the improved Wadsworth project, known as the former Wiltburto site. This commercial property located at 4084 Wadsworth Boulevard is approximately one-half acre. It was purchased by the city in order to facilitate the widening of Wadsworth Boulevard. The sale of this parcel, combined with another 0.7 acre former parkland site, has long been the city's intention, once the Wadsworth construction was nearing completion. Section 16.5 of the city charter states that the city shall not sell or depose municipally-owned buildings or real property for public purpose without first obtaining the approval by ordinance of three-fourths of the entire council.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on second reading. It is not quasi-judicial. It is a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing, and Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
Again, just real briefly, a little more context to this. Raleigh-Burtos did move right next door, so in the old Good Times Building, so we did not displace the business outside of Wheat Ridge, so that was good news, and they're in a much better local building. a much better, um, look, building for them, for their business. Um, the proceeds from the sale of this property will go back into our capital, um, budget, and the proceeds from the, the last, um, parcel, the parkland parcel, will go into our open space budget and be used for other park projects, so that's all I got.
Okay. We invite the public to speak on this item at this time. No one has signed up in council chambers or joined us online, so we will go now to questions of council. Are there questions from council on this item? Before I close the public hearing, are there any questions? I'm going to close the public hearing. Councilor Hulteen, may I have a motion on this item?
Yes, I move to approve Council Bill Seventeen Twenty-Twenty-Five, An Ordnance Approving the Sale of City-Owned Real Property and Authorizing Execution of an Agreement for the Same. On second reading, order it published and that it takes effect fifteen days after the final publication as provided by Sec, Section Five-Eleven of the Charter.
We have a motion and a second by Council Om. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
All ayes, no nays, motion carries.
All right. Thank you. With that, we will go to Agenda Item Number Six. Councilor Snell, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a motion to accept the Twenty-Twenty-Four financial statements from Haney and Co. At issue, Section Ten Dot Fifteen of the Municipal Charter for the City of Wheat Ridge requires that an independent audit be performed annually of all city accounts. In Twenty-Twenty-Four, the city received more than seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in federal funds for Wadsworth Boulevard, which also triggered a single audit of all federal funds. The CPA firm, Haney and Co., performed both the city and federal audits of the city's financial statements for the year ending December Thirty-First, Twenty-Twenty-Four. Once again this year, the city received an unmodified opinion indicating that the city's financial statements are fairly and appropriately presented. A representative from Haney will be at the August Twenty-Fifth, Twenty-Twenty-Five City Council Meeting to present the Twenty-Twenty-Four financial statements to council for acceptance.
And that's where we are today. This is going to be a, um, motion to the council. It is not quasi-judicial. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this?
We do. I'd like to introduce, uh, Mark Colvin, our finance manager. Um, he actually went home and changed his shirt, so he wants to introduce the item.
You should have seen what I had on before.
So we ought to give him a little bit of time at the mic. Mark, would you want to introduce this item?
Of course. Thank you, Patrick. Um, Honorable Mayor Starker and, uh, distinguished members of council, um, after eight years of, as your finance manager, um, uh, I'm happy to announce that we have a new set of auditors. Uh, we rotated off of the prior auditors in December of last year. They were Clifton Larson Allen, and through a, um, a very professionally-done vetting process, we, uh, engaged with Haney and Company, and so it is my pleasure to introduce, um, Abby Irvine, Audit Manager with Haney and Company.
Thank you. Mayor, members of council, my name's Abby Irvine with Haney and Company's CPAs. I'm here to give a brief presentation on, uh, the audit results for Twenty-Twenty-Four, um, and then happy to take any questions at the end if there are any. So just a quick agenda. We'll briefly go through, um, the engagement team, which includes myself, talk about the audit procedures, um, go through our required communications, talk about audit findings, and then, like I mentioned, I'll take questions at the end if there are any. So the engagement team consisted of, um, Christine McLeod. She was the partner. Unfortunately, she wasn't able to be here tonight. Myself, Abby Irvine, is the audit manager. We're with Haney and Company. As Mark mentioned, we are a new audit firm for the city this year. Um, we have offices in both Littleton and Loveland, Colorado. We have, um, those are our two Colorado offices. We have fourteen offices over five states. We're a regional firm. We have about four-hundred-and-fifty employees. Um, in Colorado, we do specialize in government and, um, nonprofit audits, and so we have about twenty-five employees between our two offices that primarily specialize in these sorts of engagements. Uh, just real briefly, I'll talk about the audit process. So as, as part of the audit process, um, it starts with planning. We actually were engaged last December. Um, right after that, we were, uh, we met with, we met with, uh, staff and, and started the audit planning process, and that really is a risk-based approach that we take, that we take, that we plan and perform, the procedures that we're going to undertake in order to, um, perform the audit. Um, every year, those procedures will vary. Obviously, we're new auditors this year, so it's a little bit of a heavier lift in the very first year when there's an audit. Um, we dig into policies, processes, procedures. Um, we are on-site. We talk with staff, um, across many departments in order to perform the audit, and then we, based on our identification of areas, um, that we want to dive into deeper, we're gonna determine, um, based on a risk-based model, which areas we're gonna, we're gonna focus on. So really, for the audit this year, we focused on areas such as revenue recognition, um, the, the new debt that was issued in Twenty-Twenty-Four. That was a very large transaction, um, so we, we looked at that in depth. Um, we, capital project spending, that's obviously a very significant component of what goes on, uh, in, financially within the city. We dove into those, um, looking at the federal awards. So as was mentioned, we performed a single audit this year, a single audit is a, is a deep dive into the federal awards, federal grants, um, looking at both controls and compliance over federal spending, making sure that that's captured appropriately, um, and then a high-level review of internal control. Uh, once we design those procedures, we determine what we're gonna look into. We come on-site. We, we look at sets of transactions. We, um, ask a lot of questions, really, um, do kind of disrupt the process for the couple of days that we're here, and then for the ongoing time after we leave. Um, certainly want to thank everyone, uh, for their patience and, and, um, willingness to answer questions. Um, it, it was, it went really, really well. It was a very, um, good process, but again, as new auditors, it is kind of tedious in the first year, as we're getting to learn, um, processes and procedures, uh, of the city and getting familiar with the financial statements and really what's there. Uh, finally, to conclude, where we're at today is we issue the audit opinion. Um, so we have issued clean or unmodified opinions on both the financial statements and the single audit for the city. Um, prepare the report, which includes the financial statements and the note disclosures, uh, which just go into the accounting policies and more detail of the city. So where we're at today, we have, um, issued the audit report. It was dated August Fifteenth. It's required to be filed with the state of Colorado. It has been filed with the state of Colorado. Um, we've issued the financial statement audit and unmodified opinion, as mentioned. Um, there was one finding, which I'll get into as we get close, as we, uh, get to the end. Um, just want to touch on that the audit includes both the city and the Urban Renewal Authority, so the Urban Renewal Authority is a separate entity, um, but is required to be included with the city's financials, um, due to, um, control of that entity by the city, and so there's just accounting rules that stay. Um, when certain criteria are met, then you include other entities within the financial statements, um, of the, of the city, and so that does include the Urban Renewal Authority. And then we also perform the single audit. Like I mentioned, that's just a separate audit where we focus primarily on federal awards. Um, we look at, so it's called one, there's, we look at ma, uh, major programs. The one major program that we looked at this year was the high, it's, it's the Highway Planning and Construction Program. It was, that was the same, um, grant or program that was reviewed last year. It's related to the Wadsworth Improvement Project, so it's a really big project. It's where most of the expenditures are, are centered for the city. It was looked at both last year and this year, um, as the primary federal award that, that we reviewed. We did issue an unmodified opinion on that. Um, one thing that I'll just comment on, on how that's different, is that focuses more on controls and compliance over federal awards, rather than the financial statement audit, which is really looking at whether or not the financial statements are presented fairly in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So they just have two different focuses. Just want to point out the differences between those two. There were no findings this year on the single audit. Uh, audit standards require that we issue, um, a communications letter at the conclusion of the audit to, uh, the board or to those charged with governance, and so I'll verbally go through that. We have issued this letter, um, when the audit was, was concluded. Part of the audit process, uh, we're required to look at accounting, uh, policies and make sure that those are in line with what we would expect, that they follow generally accepted accounting principles. Those all looked good from our, um, perspective. There were no new accounting policies this year. Um, the GASB, which is the Government Accounting Standards Board, they're the ones that issue accounting standards for government entities. They issue new accounting standards, and there's been quite a few over the last couple of years that have been issued. Um, the leasing standard, if that sounds familiar, that the city does have several leases, which they've had to capture and incorporate into the financial statements. Um, there was a new standard, similar to leases, which, um, captured capitalizing software agreements. That was in place last year. This year, there was a new standard related to compensated absences, which is essentially recording a liability related to employee leave, so this didn't have a significant impact for the city. There's really just one type of leave, and it's always been recorded, but if any of you are involved with other municipalities, this has had, um, depending on what their leave policies are, and, and, um, this has had a significant impact to other, other cities. So the only thing that I'll just mention is, um, there is just a small little additional component that was included in the financial statements, not significant monetarily from a financial statement, but, um, the standard required that if, um, the standard requires you to capture leave that's accumulated, rolls over, um, isn't expected to be used or paid by, by the municipality in the future, and then any sort of salary-related payments or employer-related costs related to that, and so the employer-related costs, such as payroll taxes or retirement, um, contributions, those are now included in that liability. It was not significant to the city, but just want to point that out that that was new. Um, part of the audit process, accounting process, we do dive into accounting estimates, um, so the ones that we look at are gonna be depreciation, which is essentially a cost allocation, but your capital projects, your capital asset activity is pretty significant, so we do want to make sure that that's recorded appropriately and in line with what we would expect. Um, we look at discount rates applied to measuring those leases that I mentioned, so that was a new accounting standard a couple of years ago. Everyone's still kind of getting up to speed and getting, getting good at, at putting that together, and so we look at those. Um, and, uh, the, and as I mentioned, the salary-related payments or the employer-related accruals related to compensated absences, that was new. Um, none of these were, we deemed super significant, but because they're estimates, they're a little bit more subjective. We want to look at those, uh, just a little bit deeper. Uh, the audit went really, really well. We had no disagreements, no real difficulties getting the audit. Certainly want to thank finance staff, um, for all their time and effort in, um, assisting with answering our questions and getting us what we needed to be here today, uh, to issue the, uh, the financial statements and the clean opinions on the financial statements. Uh, regarding, uh, consultation with other accountants, we're not aware if there was any consultations with other accountants. Uh, didn't have any disagreements or difficulties on any sort of accounting principles that we were aware of. In order to finalize the audit, we did ask management to sign a representation letter. Um, that's pretty standard, and that's been signed, um, and completed, and then I've already touched on the single audit and kind of what that includes. Uh, and so finally, just the current year, uh, audit findings, and I'll briefly touch on prior year audit findings as well, and so there were, uh, there was a few audit adjustments that we had related to, uh, the WR, WRA, which is Renewal Wheat Ridge, the, the component unit, the, um, the Urban Renewal Authority, related to year-end accruals. Um, so after the end of the year, there was, um, payments that are issued for sales tax and property tax, um, I believe it's the abatements. Um, those were issued, but they related to the prior year, um, um, taxes, um, property taxes and sales taxes, so essentially, they need to be accrued in the prior year. There was, there was a few of those, and so they, they were not accrued as liabilities and expenses in the right period, and so, because there was quite a few of them, three or four, um, we did have a, a finding this year. It was a continuation of a finding from the prior auditors last year, um, just related to the year-end closed process and making sure that all year-end accruals are captured and accounted for. Um, I will say that, um, this was specific to the URA. Um, this, we did, you know, do a deep dive into both the URA and the city's accruals. Um, everything on the city's side looked really good. This was just an, an oversight, it looks like, related to the URA. Um, and so, you know, I do, you know, this was a, a comment in the report. I do believe that this will be something that's looked at next year, remedied. Feels like it's a, it's a one-time situation that, uh, we won't, it's not something that should be continuing in terms of missing, um, accrued expenses as of the end of the year. And then related to, there was a few prior year audit findings related to just making sure the CIFA, which is the Schedule of Federal Expenditures, that's the summary document that basically summarizes all of your federal expenditures and, and, um, the awards related to those, making sure that that's complete. Um, and, and we did do a deep dive into that this year and had no, no comments related to that. That was a prior year finding, um, and we, that was corrected in the current year, and so, um, did, the staff did a really good job making sure everything was captured. We had some really good discussions on a couple of items that, um, we weren't sure, um, or some questions on some of the grants, and, um, everything was there and appropriately reported. Um, lease reporting, um, as I mentioned, again, that was a new accounting standard a couple of years ago. Everyone's still getting up to speed. It's not something that you do accounting-wise every single, um, month. It's more of a year-end process, and so we did look at all the leases, uh, deeper. Those are all captured and recorded. There were some new leases that were renegotiated this year, um, and so those are appropriately included and, uh, recorded in the financial statements. Um, and then there was another comment last year about sale of, capturing the sale of a property. That was more of a one-off, uh, situation. Um, I think that was unique to last year, not, so not something that we needed to look into deeper this year, but certainly, I just wanted to report that that was also not a repeat finding. With that, I wasn't going to go into the report in detail. Everyone has a copy of it in their packet, but I am happy to answer any questions if there are any over the report or the audit presentation itself.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Irvine. Before we go to questions from council, we invite the public to speak on this item. I have no one signed up in the council chambers or online, so we'll go to questions from council. Any questions from council, or, uh, Councilor Larson?
Oh, thank you, Mayor, and, uh, I, I don't think I can get too deep into this, um, but I, I was impressed with, uh, the, um, the, the, I guess, the top-line, uh, part of the report. Um, I guess my question is, when we look at the, um, significant increase in, in our, uh, city's capital, uh, total asset, and then the, um, not, uh, concurrent increase in long-term liabilities, um, does this, does this, uh, first off, it, does it say that, that the city of Wheat Ridge, um, is, uh, is in a, is not putting itself behind an eight-ball for, um, uh, getting too far, um, over, uh, with liabilities that are increasing too much? Because if you, if you look in the report, it, it had almost, our total liabilities have almost doubled. What does, as an auditor, what does that tell you?
Well, the li, the increase in the liabilities relates to the bond issuance, and the increase in the assets, obviously, was a spending. A lot of that spending is coming from the bond issuance. Um, so, assets increasing, um, I would expect your assets to increase because you've issued debt. You now have the cash. You have the cash available to be able to spend on those assets. Um, is that answering your question?
Yeah, it, it does, and, and I appreciate it. Um, it's, I'm, I'm sure it's difficult to, um, expl, explains things clearly to people that are not auditors, um, but I appreciate your patience on that, and, uh, then the other question was, um, it looks like the, the city's, um, revenues, property taxes, sales taxes and whatnot, are, are heading in the right direction. I guess the question is, does that, from, from, uh, what you know about the, this, this city of Wheat Ridge, um, do you feel like that is, uh, that increase, that trend is, uh, is sustainable?
So I will say, as, as auditors, we are, we don't necessarily analyze whether or not it's sustainable, but we look at things like your fund balance. Does your fund balance look like it's sufficient to support, um, what's happened and, and even what's maybe planned for the future? Um, as auditors, we kind of are always looking backwards, so we're looking at what happened to make sure it's appropriately recorded in the financial statements according to accounting standards that you're- statements according to accounting standards that you're supposed to be following. So really, that's kind of where our focus is. But again, looking at revenue trends, if there was something concerning from our perspective, then we would certainly be commenting on that. Nothing that came to our attention that would be concerning. We look at, like I mentioned, fund balance, is that positive? Is it increasing? That's always a really good indication that the financial position of any municipality is improving. And, you know, obviously, cash positions as well, looking at that. So there was nothing that came to our attention as we looked at the one-year, we have a one-year history now with the city, that we were concerned about.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
Any further questions before we go to a motion? Seeing none, Counselor Snell may have a motion on this item.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the 2024 financial statements from Haney and Company.
We have a motion and a second by Mayor Protem Stites. Is there discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor, just real quickly, while Mark is here, I do want to thank Mark and his finance staff. This is a lot of work to put these together, and our financials are getting more and more complicated every year because of all the activities we have going on. So, Mark, thank you.
Seeing none, a little clerk please poll the council.
All ayes, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. We will now go to Agenda Item Number Seven, Counselor Weaver. Would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a motion awarding the Youngfield Public Art Contract to Bangburn, Williams, and Davis in the amount of $240,000 for their mural proposal entitled Wild Beauty. Do you want me to read the issue?
No, that's okay. Well, I know we have a presentation on this.
All right.
We'll just abbreviate that. This is going to be a motion of the council. It is not quasi-judicial. And Mr. Goff, I'm going to ask you if you have a staff presentation on this.
Thank you. We do have a presentation. Karen, do you want to introduce this quickly? Karen O'Donnell or Parks and Rec Director?
Good evening, everyone. I think you're pretty familiar with our next speaker, as Kendall Peterson with There Squared is, has been our public art consultant for quite some time now. So she is going to share the proposal for the Youngfield Beautification Project. Kendall.
Hi, thank you, Mayor and Council. I, this is maybe the last time I'll be in front of you all, so last bond project, and this wasn't a bond project, but last public art approval for you all. So this has been kind of a different project. It's kind of been a little bit longer, some switches in management, some switches in the scope. So I'll try to give you the, just the 30-cent tour. So the overview, I think you all are familiar with the project that is slated for Youngfield, the Youngfield Beautification Project. I think the goals are well-known. It's a project that's meant to sort of make the area more beautiful and more, and sort of more welcoming to people who are exiting off of the highway, coming into the area, coming down from the mountains, or coming, going up north, and just making sure that the businesses and everything feels like it's a really kind of warm and welcoming neighborhood. And one of the first instances that you have to come out into Wheat Ridge. So it'll kind of announce its presence as Wheat Ridge. And so there's quite a bit of, they're going to be doing lots of landscaping and improvements on sidewalk and make it more walkable, and also some markers that say you're actually in Wheat Ridge. So there's been a lot of design and discussion around this project. So I think you all know what the existing conditions are. It's, so our project was always slated to be something that would complement the whole beautification project. The funding comes from both CIP and from urban renewal funding, from a couple, it was kind of cobbled together from a couple of different other projects. This is our group. We, it was actually, we formed it, and I'll show you the, I'll show you the timeline. It was kind of a long, long time, longer timeline. So $250,000 was what was available. We have quite a bit of just extra expenses that we're going to use, and they will go back into the project if needed. So the advertised project was $240,000. And when they came to me to talk about it, it was supposed to be something that's related to a mural and possibly lighting for under the bridges, because there's two bridges that we're considering as well. But we talked a lot about the lighting and decided that lighting was going to eat up a lot of the budget, and also we would have to get that approved through CDOT, which is problematic. Still going on Wheat Ridge, on Wadsworth, on that project, so. So here's an overview of the process. We started this project back in 2024, and we did a request for qualifications for Colorado-based artists. We selected four semifinalists, A.J. Davis, Alexandria Pangburn, Julia Williams, and Jesse Crock. We had a bit of a delay. One of the project managers, who was really trying to be the person who was kickstarting the project, left the project, and then we were waiting for a new project manager for a little bit. So we finally were able to do an orientation with the artists on December 12th of 2024. At that meeting, we started to talk about the scope of the project. So the virtual meeting is always for the artist to ask questions of the project manager and get sort of a sense of how much they're going to be painting, where and what. And at that time, they started to talk a little bit about the slope pavement, and I'll talk a little bit about that, and including that in the mural scope of work, which was new to me and new to, you know, the project. It was just something that the project people had been talking about, the need to make that slope look a little better. So we finished that meeting, and then we had Jesse Crock. Because of the size of the project, I think he was, he's a school teacher, he's an art teacher locally, and also he was just feeling like it was too much of a project for him, so he dropped out. And then the other three artists teamed up as a team. That's unusual, never happened to me before, but it's within their purview. If they want to split the commission three ways, more power to them. And I think that in the end, I think we're getting a lot of bang for our buck, because we're getting three really incredible artists working on this project. So they did their initial presentation on February 4th, 2025, and it was approved. But we had lots of discussion about the slope pavement. So you can see in this, this is their first proposed concept, and basically, they were spending a lot of money and time on improving that slope pavement, which is basically at a 45-degree angle. And that was going to, because it was at that angle, they had just proposed doing sort of a color wash, and it's hard to see in these images to see exactly what it's going to look like. They are very hand-painted images in the end. They never look exactly as beautiful as they're going to look when they are in real life. So the slope pavement, the next slide showed, they actually went out there and stood on the slope pavement, and I think everybody was really taken aback by this. They were going to have to have all this special gear. They were going to have to be belaying from the top. And I, you can see the existing conditions. There's lots of seams that need to be filled, there's lots of weeds growing out of it. And I think there was a concern that putting paint on that surface would probably be a maintenance burden in the end, because the wash from the cars and the stuff that they put on the roads to de-ice, it was just going to be really difficult to keep those looking nice. So we went back to the drawing board. We talked a little bit about how the city's going to be managing those slopes, and I think that there's been a decision. I don't know exactly where it stands, it's beyond my purview, but there's been a decision to maybe just do a color wash of, on the concrete and do some filling of the cracks, and then just leaving the vertical surfaces for the artists. So we went back to the drawing board and re-scope the whole project. So basically, I said, okay, artists, you have this much money, how far can you take it? If you take out the slope pavement, how far can you take it? So they came back to us on August 1st with a new proposal, and I'm going to show you that. It was unanimously approved by cultural council on August 13th, and now we're coming to you. So the concept is wild beauty. These artists are, I think you may know Julia Williams's work. She did the humongous mural that's at the Coors Brewery with, she, she all. Just one thing about muralists, they team up all the time. This is not unusual. Muralists will kind of get a, get a kind of a group together to paint these bigger projects. So I'm not surprised that they did that for this. But Alexandria Pangburn is known for her very, almost hyper-realist nature work. They're just beautiful. So I think she's going to be the one doing a lot of animals. And then the other two artists are probably going to be doing much more of the accent work. So you can see, this is sort of the larger view, and then we broke it down. So this is, I believe that this is a sandhill crane. I don't know my birds, and I will get you an appropriate description of each and every little piece of this as soon as we get it approved. So there's also flora and fauna that's local to the area, columbines and some other different types of wildflowers. This is my favorite part. They put some bunnies. There was some objection in the original proposal that there were two birds coming together, and I think people really wanted to have more variety of wildlife. So the bunnies are my favorite. I don't know if everybody else loves them, but I think they're pretty cool. I know Karen likes them too. And then it goes into the tunnel. So you'll see these, these birds are kind of like flying into the tunnel, so you'll see this continuation, and the petals will kind of, kind of fly through the tunnel as well. And then this is then the 40th and Youngfield Tunnel. This is where we also have some bees and some butterflies, some pollinators, and then other types of flowers. And this will be really amazing for, this is the one that goes through to Clear Creek, the new residential and hospital area. There's the butterfly. So this is samples of their work. These are collaborations that they've done together, all three of them, in different combinations. But generally, Alexandria is the one who does the animals. And that's all I have. If you have any questions for me about the process or what to expect, the timing on this, we're not sure yet. Usually murals are painted after all the project is done and before you put in landscaping. So they don't want them tromping around on the landscaping. So I will be able to get back to you on timing and when this will be executed. They expect it will take around six weeks to do, and yes, they can paint on that rough, they can paint on any material, but it will be, in terms, it will be primed so that everything will stick really well and will stay. They will do their painting, and it's a combination of latex and spray, and then they will also do a UV coat, which is also a graffiti deterrent on the top. So that's all part of their project budget.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And before we go to questions from council, I will say that we invite the public to speak on this. I have no one signed up to speak either in person or online, so now we'll go to questions from council. Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. My question is more around maintenance and whether that's going to be built into the budget and what that kind of looks like moving forward.
You want me, you got something to say? Go ahead, and then I'll follow up.
So the artists, that was one of the reasons why we chose to have local artists, so that they are in the area, and if they, so the graffiti, the graffiti coat that they use will actually be really great. All you need to do is sort of rub it off if it's a small, if it's small, or you can use water to, like a water pressure, pressure water to get off. If there's something that's more deep, or somebody's gouged it, or there's other types of thing, the artists could be contracted to come back and just do smaller little bits. But I will say, murals are by their nature more temporary than other works of art. So you will have, I think we're going to recommend in this, in this type of thing, that they, we can, we can, you can abate parts of it if you need to. There's ways that you could probably, if there's a reason to paint over something and do a new mural 15 years down the road, that's all within your purview.
I was just going to add to, more in general about maintenance of all of our work, our current public art policy is not, does not really address maintenance. And we are going to probably bring, maybe work with Kendall, and bring back a proposed new public art policy that will address maintenance and other items as well.
It's not unusual. Usually, there's a lot of thought put into creation of artwork, but also then maintaining it as an asset for the city is really, really important. So, yeah, we'll have to come to some sort of...
Thank you. Counselor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. The only question I have is, would the artists be able to do some type of just quick assessment of areas where there's a chronic, like road salt coming through?
That's a great question. I don't know about that. I thought you were going to ask if the artists were going to be able to do some community, getting out in the community, but I would say yes to that. In terms of the salt, that's going to be, we might have to do some observations this winter and just see where it's, where it's running down. But I think we're avoiding it a lot by not putting it on that slope pavement. The slope pavement is where most of it goes and dries out. So it kind of goes into that. It is what it's going to, what it's going to be in terms of, but that's why there is slope pavement there as opposed to earth, because it will run down and trickles when it goes down a slope. So that's why you have slope pavement.
Thank you. Counselor Larson.
Yeah, a quick question for staff. This is a very long-horizon project. It's been going on for a long time. But the Youngfield Beautification Project, this is one element of it. What are the other ones, and how, where are we at with the other ones? The other parts of the project?
Of the Youngfield Beautification? Yes, it's, it was a lot longer than we hoped. Again, working with CDOT and Federal Highway Administration, not the only reason it took us long, but we just finally got approval from Federal Highway Administration and CDOT to work in their right-of-way. So the project has been, was put out to bid, and the company's... Kent, you want to add to that?
The project's been awarded. You all approved that a few weeks ago, and so we're going to issue a notice to proceed to the contractor on September 15th, and he'll get started.
And part of their scope is going to be, as Kendall mentioned, the slope pavement. Very early on, when we were looking at conceptual ideas for the Youngfield Beautification Project, we were hoping that the sloped area could be landscaped with trees and bushes, and after they looked at it, the engineers looked at it, they said, no, that's not that great idea. So part of the scope of the contract that Kent just mentioned will take care of the slope pavement with some type of, as Kendall mentioned, just a washing with some color that's going to complement the area.
Kendall, in light of another contract that's happening, when do you think this group of artists will commence and complete their work?
It's a great question. I know that they are about to do the notice to proceed, so I will, that's the first thing I'm going to do, is start the contract with the artists and put together, usually, I mean, I don't know what the time window is, but it'll be, we'll sandwich this in between somewhere where you still have, if there's traffic control, because we don't, we don't want them painting when there's not traffic control. So we'll just have to kind of figure out when that, when that happens. I'm assuming it's, you know, several months from now.
Yeah, that's correct. We'll coordinate with Kendall and merge these two projects together and make sure that there's time. We just received the construction schedule this week, and so again, issuing that notice to proceed, and then we'll, we'll get together and coordinate the work plan.
Okay. But in any case, we'd want to do this in fair weather, correct?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I think that, I think that the idea of having the artists come out and talk and making sure that you have a media release, because people will love to watch it happening, if we can... If, if we can do some sort of time lapse or something like that, that would be really interesting to, to make sure that you get people out there knowing what's going on and watch it just come, come to life. So.
Great. All right. I don't see any further questions. Thank you very much. Great presentation. Always nice to have you here. Counselor Weaver, may I have a motion on this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve a motion awarding the Youngfield Public Art Contract to Pangburn, Williams, and Davis in the amount of $240,000 for the mural project, for the mural proposal entitled Wild Beauty. Second.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Hoppe. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
All ayes, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we will go to agenda item number eight. Counselor Hoppe, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 42-2025, a resolution amending the fiscal year budget for 2025 renewal Wheatridge Bond Fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $1,256,679 for the purpose of issuing a contract for construction of the 32nd Avenue Bike Lanes Project to KCI.
KCI.
K E C I Civil Inc.
Thank you. This will be a resolution of the council. It is not quasi judicial. Mr. Goff, wherever you are, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We do. We're just pulling it up. But Alex pulled it up and I'll let Kent Kisselmann start.
All right, Mr. Kisselmann.
Thank you. Good evening and thank you for having me. So just kind of go, go, go back a little bit. We have a little presentation, so it's been a while since you've seen this project. This is another, this is a transportation improvement program. So it's been, again, another one of those years in the making, working with CDOT and getting concurrence and approval and plans approved. And now we're, we're at this point. So our, our goal is to get this project completed yet this year. And you can see on this first slide, this shows kind of the extent of the area from Alcoyra to Wright along 37, 32nd Avenue. Next page. And then this is just one area in between by the on-ramp of I-70. This is really the, the entire project is a mill and overlay in general. So you're going to tear out the pavement. We're going to put in new pavement. But in this section, there's going to be a median and some sidewalk improvements, just this section only. Next slide. And then we really get into the, the heart of the, the project, which is the, the bike lane improvements and the, the striping and signage. And so you'll see, you know, there's several of these pages and we'll quickly go through them. But you'll see the green, you know, that designates the, the highlighted bike lanes, the updated signage, you can continue. And then again, here, just highlighting those areas, drawing attention, again, with the, with the bike lanes and the corridor, reminding this is all mill and overlay. Go ahead. And it, and it just continues. And so I think there's two more slides of that. And this is just the, the last, this is going north and, north and south of, of one of the areas. And then the last slide just shows, you know, kind of that designated striping that's going to be on there and highlighting those things. We put this out for invitation to bid. We received, one, two, three, four, five, five bids. KCI was the lowest responsive bidder. We've previously done work with KCI in the past, so we're very comfortable with them. We don't get a choice, even though we were fortunate that KCI is a low bid, but when you do a CDOT project like this, you don't get a choice unless there's something that CDOT rejects. So again, that's why we were waiting for that concurrence from them to go through the, the bid documents and say that KCI was the lowest responsive bidder. With that, I think we're ready for, you know, staff recommends moving ahead with this project and, and the amount of $1,142,435.25 with a contingency of 10% for a total contract not to exceed $1,256,678.25.
Thank you. Before we go to questions from council, we invite the public to speak on these items. I have no one signed up from the public to speak either in person or online. So we'll go to questions from council. Counselor Hulteen?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm excited to, to see this moving forward. It's, I know it's been a long time. Thank you, CDOT. Can you remind me, this, this project came about, it was awarded some funds, right, through Dr. Cog Regional Award Process and as a priority for Jefferson County as well, right? This is, this is a project that has had a lot of collaboration, is being funded through a couple of different funding sources. Is that correct?
Correct. The primary funding source was a TIP, a Transportation Improvement Program grant through Dr. Cog.
Yep.
And I don't know if Jefferson County's putting any funding in, but they are cooperating and working with us because it does connect with their bike lanes going further west.
Great. Well, I know that there are a lot of, a lot of people who will be happy to see it come in. I ride through here about once a month and it's really hairy. I mean, it's, it's tough to navigate. There's a lot of cars coming in different directions. I don't want to lose sight entirely of the lighting situation. I think a lot of times people don't realize just how dark it is when you enter a tunnel when you're on your bike. And, you know, I ride with my headlights at night, but even in the day, like the conditions, it takes a second for the eye to adjust. So, you know, to whatever extent we're able to continue to try and pursue lighting for, for our underpasses for bicyclists, that's, it makes a difference for safety for everybody. But thank you for the reminder on the funding sources.
Thank you. Counselor Larson?
Thank you, Mayor. And, and one short question here, and given the scope of this project. I, I wonder if there's available a, a drawing or an image or some sort of rendering of what the work under the, the overpass, what that will look like?
Again, for the, for the majority of this project, it is a mill and an overlay. And so it is removing the road and putting the road back in its existing condition, except for that section that we showed, which is the next slide, except for this slide, which is going to have that median and that additional sidewalk. So beyond that.
And striping, of course.
And striping is the improvement. So again, new road, where it sits, there's no modification or, or extension of sidewalks. The sidewalks are there. This is just a pavement project with additional striping and signage.
So there's no, there's no barrier between the traffic lanes and the bike lanes?
No, only in the spot.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Hearing none. Counselor Hoppe, would you please provide a motion on this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Resolution Number 42-2025, Resolution Amending the Fiscal Year of 2025 Renewal Wheatridge Bond Fund Budget to Reflect the Approval of a Supplemental Budget Appropriation in the Amount of $1,256,679 for the Purpose of Issuing a Contract for Construction of 32nd Avenue Bike Lanes Project to KCI Civil Inc.
We have a motion and a second by Mayor Protem Stites. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
All ayes, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you. That concludes our action items tonight. We will now go to City Managers Matters. Mr. Goff?
Thank you, Mayor. Just real quickly, we did receive our July financials from Finance and just wanted to give a little bit of a report on where we sit with our revenues. So in comparison to 2024, July itself, sales tax is only up 1%, but for year-to-date through July compared to the same period last year, our sales tax is still holding pretty strong, about 6.5% improved over last year. So that's, that's very good news. Revenues from building use tax, building permits and plan review fees were up 68% over July of last year. And that's really due to Home 2 Suites, our second hotel that is coming into Clerk Cross Development. So we saw those revenues come in in July. Parks and Rec is also doing really well. As Mark, he's still here? No? He says their revenues are sizzling in July compared to July of last year. They're up 26%. So that's across the board with our rec center, fitness and aquatic. So doing really well in our parks and rec. Overall, general fund revenues compared to last year, year-to-date are up 10%. And again, that's really because of, of the project in February of '25 that submitted permits for the STACK multi-family community project, 44th Gibley, and now the Home 2 Suites project at Clerk Crossing are skewing our revenues a little bit. But we're going to, we're working on making sure that we're counting those as one-time revenues. It's not something we're going to see every year. So when we bring the budget to you for 2026, you'll see a presentation on, on the one-time revenues versus our ongoing revenues. So overall, looking pretty good revenue-wise. So happy to report that our financial situation is looking pretty decent. Thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney's Matters?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Let's see, we will go to elected officials matters and start with Counselor Snell.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. This past weekend, I got to attend Sweet Ridge Studios End of Season Student Art Show. And that was an amazing experience. And I, I, it also coincides with Sweet Ridge Studios 10-year anniversary, which is also such a, it's such an advantage for our community. The, the way that Melinda and her team had everything set up, students' artwork was on display, there were pieces that were even for sale. And I think that what that does for, for the students, like basically, you know, in, in addition to being, being able to create and, and bring that energy, they also see that, you know, their, their art is, art is valuable, art is worth something. And I feel like that is so needed. And it's also just a testament to what a great team Melinda's assembled. And I think that they, as an organization, are such a benefit to Wheat Ridge. They bring so much for the kiddos of Wheat Ridge, for creativity in general, and they've now got some adult classes as well. So kudos to them, 10 years. That's a long time. So a great, great time there. And then I just wanted to just lend a word of, of support and thanks for us acknowledging Suicide Prevention Month and our continued relationship with Jefferson Center for Mental Health. It's super important and I'm glad that we are so well connected with them because they are a huge resource for us. So that's what I got. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Counselor Hulteen?
Thank you. I'm going to build on City Manager's Green theme, although he's green money, I've got other greens. So I've got three, three green updates for you guys. Sustainable Wheat Ridge met last week and we hosted some state partners, Co-Perg and Sweep, who are doing a lot of interesting legislative work and community programming around sustainability. And they shared with Sustainable Wheat Ridge some of the, you know, recent accomplishments both organizations have had and invited Sustainable Wheat Ridge to be a partner in some of the implementation of the programs. And so a lot of excitement and enthusiasm coming from Sustainable Wheat Ridge to, to leverage some of that. So, and then my next green thing is actually the green. I was there for an event with, with some of the rest of you on Saturday morning and it was just, I cannot overstate how marvelous it was. There were just families and kids. It was, it's already just such a magnetic place for people to gather. And, and I had a chance to chat with a couple of people that I, you know, they were curious while we were there and met some neighbors. And two of them said, you know, what can I do to be more involved in the city? So I, I may become the person you don't want to talk to at the green because I'm like, oh, well, let's exchange numbers and let's talk. But anyway, just, it's exciting to see that come online. I'm really looking forward to the official opening, but nobody seems to care that it's not officially open. They are there and that playground is, is legendary already. So congratulations on getting that done. And then my last green, green thing of the night is I'm really excited to see the green paint coming in on the Wadsworth project. The multi-use trail does have a lot of conflict zones if you're walking and biking. And I think a lot of vehicular traffic pulling in and out, especially on the east side. There, yeah, okay. Were you wondering if there was green paint? Yeah, yeah. Some of us saw it with our eyeballs. Yeah, there's real green paint. So that is just really helpful to alert cars to look for bicyclists and, and obviously pedestrians too, but we're moving a little faster on bikes. So I know the city has at times struggled with its green paint policy. I was also excited to see it in the renderings for 32nd Avenue. So three greens and looking forward to seeing everyone in September when we're back.
Thank you. Counselor Larson?
Thank you, Mayor. And I have three real quick items here. First, I'd like to recognize in, in tonight's consent agenda was item number 1D, and that was approving the expense for the emergency repairs at around 38th and Hoyt. And that, that project involves a, a process called spin cast concrete that will end up, if we go forward and use this for stormwater repair, will end up saving the city at least 25% compared to traditional excavate and replace projects. This is the second project using that technology. And what it does is it, instead of excavating and removing the pipe, it, it basically applies a coat of concrete on the interior that is durable and, and it's, again, saving the city a lot of time and expense on repairs like that. So at this point, I would like to commend our Public Works Department to getting these repairs. That was 700 linear foot, a very, very long project and very involved, getting that project done faster and at a lower cost. This last week on Thursday, I was able to join other city elected officials for the Home Builders Annual Affordable Housing Tour. After a presentation at their office, we did go to visit a site that's almost completed in Lakewood at around 10th and Carr. That is an affordable apartment building that is just, it looks every bit as much like a market rate apartment, but it is, it is affordable, has a number of unique features. After that, went down to Lone Tree and we saw some of the very impressive affordable housing projects going on at the Ridge Gate Development. This is all pretty much east of I-25. Very impressive, very of the moment. These apartments and townhomes are just really what the market is, is looking for and they are affordable based on, on most of the criteria we're using now. And then finally, I'd just like to make sure everybody understands that Labor Day is coming up this weekend and that I would recommend everybody take some time off the weekend and, and just relax.
Thank you. Counselor Dozeman?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Definitely looking forward to celebrating our boards and commission members at the green. I'm really excited. It'll be the first time that I'm actually stepping foot on it, not for my children though. And I also want to wish my parents, Steve and Denise Dozeman, a happy 35th wedding anniversary. And I'd like to thank them for choosing to raise our family in Wheat Ridge and also helping with my children so that I can serve in this capacity. Hope it was a wonderful 35th.
Thank you. Counselor Weaver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like some, to ask for support from council to bring forth a, a study session on the, I'm going to say sort of farm animal issue because I think there's a lot of things that kind of need to be discussed around whether it's noise or, I'm hoping we can find a happy compromise where we can continue to be an agricultural community with roosters somewhat a part of that and, and, and find some common ground. So, great. Thanks, thanks, everybody.
We've got, we've got hands up for that. Counselor Ohm?
Thank you, Mayor. Last week was busy. Went to the Wellbeing's Integrated Medicine and that was probably one of the most attended ribbon cuttings I'd seen, but they pulled out all the stops and thank you to, I think it was at the Wheat Ridge business that had helped with the, there was a, I think there's a fire truck there. Please, please.
Probably, probably.
Okay, yeah. Wellbeing's Integrated Medicine. I'll let the, the mayor finish up, but it was, it was a lot. It was, there was so much stuff going on, they even had. was, it was a lot. It was, there was so much stuff going on. They even had a, the dunk tank. So they, they pulled no, no stops on it. Very, very good. And then I went over to Ricoli's for Local Works Event with, Protem Stites was there. And both those events were really good for the city. And I'll let, I'll let the mayor and everybody else say a few more words on those that attended that event. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hoppy?
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Stites?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to thank Congresswoman Pedersen for joining several of us for lunch at Colorado Plus last week. It's, it's great always to interact with her. She's, she's been a big friend of Wheat Ridge and helped us quite a bit over the last couple of years. So I wanted to thank her for, for coming and speaking with us. Also, I, I attended the Ricoli's event, Local Works, as usual, did a phenomenal job. But we got to rename a beer. We ended up keeping it Tears of Tom Brady, I think is what it's called. And personally, as a, as a New England hater, I'm, I'm all for it. So no, love New England, just not the Patriots. It's okay. And that's it. If you can find it, you should find it and buy it in Wheat Ridge. And right now, you should definitely find it and buy it on Wadsworth. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all. It was a busy week. I was, as Counselor Ohm indicated, Wellbeings Integrative Medicine at the northeast corner of, of 38th Avenue and Pierce, you know, revitalizing a building that's been there for a long time, but, and actually the location of our first post office, as I understand. It didn't look like the first post office, but I think that structure may be somewhere else now. But great, great event there. And I think you might have been looking for the Wheat Ridge Chamber and the Wheat Ridge Business Association. And, and we really wanna, wanna say thank you to our business associations that promote business in Wheat Ridge. They do a great job. And we, we had a lot of, a lot of good camaraderie going on in that, on that event there. And, and it's really, it's exciting to see new businesses and opening in our city and, and a lot of new energy. And I'm really excited about the energy coming out of The Green at 38th. And I think that's really gonna move, move a lot of needles in our city. So thank you all very much for, for all of the things that you do in our city. That concludes our, our meeting tonight. Let's see, I believe we're here, not here next week, because, because that's fifth Monday. Is that Labor Day weekend? Okay, there's another one in September. So anyway, please drive slowly and safely through our city so that everyone gets home in a great shape, and we appreciate you joining us, and we look forward to seeing you again. With that, we will stand adjourned.